On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act, such as our city council meetings, from being conducted in person. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later listening on the city's YouTube channel. Tonight you will notice that myself, the council, and certain staff are using our video cameras. However, be aware that our meeting platform cannot show all of our videos at one time. Rather, it will focus on the last four to five individuals who have spoken. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone, listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing, so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice are also able to make comments under the audience comments portion of the meeting. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to take the roll call of council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Marx.
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Here.
Thank you all. In addition, the following city staff are participating in tonight's meeting. City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz, Deputy City Administrator Andrew Schneider, City Attorney Jim Haney, City Clerk Tina Eggers, Deputy City Clerk Tisha Giezer, Tisha Giezer, Finance Director Beth Goldberg, Human Resources Director Stephanie Johnson, Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling, Police Chief Scott Beerbaum, although looking at the attendees, I see that we might have Commander Porter with us this evening, Economic Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes, and Human Services and Sustainability Coordinator Monica Negrella. For those members of the public on the call, welcome. The clerk or I will call on you to make comments when we reach that portion of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all participating tonight, please make sure your microphone, oh, please mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off, as there is a delay. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. And for council members, since the video will not show all of you at one time, please continue to use the Skype Meeting Messenger to indicate when you wish to speak. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second a motion, or participate in a debate. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Could you all mute your microphones, so that we don't have any background information, interference? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item under Agenda is Audience Comments. So, Tisha or Tina, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Clerk Eggers, I have one person who has signed up, Susan.
Mayor Polly, this is Deputy Clerk Giezer. We have one individual who's signed up to comment, Susan Neville. I don't see her number listed currently. Susan, are you on the line? Susan, are you on the line? Mayor Polly, she doesn't seem to be with us, and no one additionally signed up for public comments.
Hi, thank you very much, Tisha. As a reminder, written comments can also be submitted to council at any time at citycouncil@isicuaqua.gov. And comments received by email on tonight's agenda items will be acknowledged by our Council President Hunt, under the corresponding agenda item. So we will move to committee and regional reports. Let's start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michelle.
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Walsh. I attended the Isicua Chamber of Commerce Board Directors' Meeting a few days ago, feels like a month ago. And generally, it was just a time for them to ask us some questions in the midst of this emergency. No action was taken, but it's just very important to stay connected to our business community, understand what their needs are, and be able to convey that back. Obviously, the big concerns are around being able to conduct their payroll when the community will be open again, and the ability to maintain their revenue as much as possible. They were interested here that we have pushed off VNO tax payments for the first quarter for any businesses that need that. And so we'll just continue to keep the line of communication open. And I know that our Economic Development Department is doing a fantastic job connecting with businesses for their needs. So if there are any outstanding needs, please feel free to connect with any of us on council or Jen Davis Hayes, our Economic Development Manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman.
Councilmember Goodman here, I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Marx.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Marx here, I have no report this evening.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Marx. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, this is Chris Ray, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam President Hunt. I have one brief evening. Kokoni Interlocal Agreement Committee Meeting. Kokoniora are a third government, and a part of our ongoing environmental stewardship efforts. This was the kickoff meeting of the Interlocal Agreement Management Committee, and we covered an overview of the status of the Lake Mamish Kokoni salmon population recovery efforts and the interlocal process. The next meeting of the ILA Management Committee will be on April 27th. That concludes my report.
Madam Mayor, you're on mute. Well, I was like way into the middle of the speech, but anyway. I am noticing, thank you, Councilmember Walsh, I am noticing that there are several microphones that are not muted, and we are having some audio quality issues when Council President Hunt was speaking. So please make sure that if you're not speaking, that you have your microphone muted. Thank you, Council President Hunt. Next item on the agenda is the Mayor's Report, which I'll pull up and go through next. So, good evening, councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. Just to recap a little from the last few weeks, the COVID-19 pandemic has created a crisis in our community, with dramatic effect on our residents, businesses, and social service providers. These impacts are of magnitude not seen by many in our lifetimes. We have had to shut our communities down and weather the storm. And we share the sadness for the toll that this disease has taken on members of our community and their families. As a city, we know that we are no longer able to provide the services and programs that were supported by the city council's adoption of the 2020 budget, due to the forecasted significant shortfall in revenues needed to provide those services to our community. We need to reduce our services to match our expected revenue levels, and that means taking a hard look at the community and council priorities, and only delivering those very basic priority services. To do this, my administration has assumed a three-month shutdown of most of our economy, but we recognize that potential impacts may linger through the remainder of 2020 and possibly beyond. We also recognize that our forecasts will likely change. Recovery may exceed our expectations, as other sources of revenue, such as federal relief funding, will allow us to modify our plans. However, we need to be thoughtful and strategic in how we navigate these next few months. Without complete data, we've had to make some assumptions. A pandemic creates an ever-changing set of constraints and issues, and requires us to be flexible and nimble in order to respond in a responsible way. As of five weeks ago, as the COVID-19 crisis unfolded, our city team has realigned itself around a very limited set of services, in order to remain operational during the governor's Stay Home Stay Healthy Order, and the mandated mitigation measures. These functions include community safety and security, human services network support, financial operations, public work services, such as water, sewer, sanitation, and waste management, and economic recovery efforts. Tonight, we are transitioning to a new discussion. We must look forward to the upcoming months and the transition to a new normal, where the COVID-19 threat is still factored into our plans. I'm announcing the formation of an Isicua Recovery Task Force, which will advise us on various issues related to the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and future reopening of city services and programs. The task force will also advise us on other community initiatives that are important to Isicua residents and businesses over the next several months. Membership on this task force will be open to all current members of the city's boards and commissions. This pandemic has dramatically changed how we as a city do business. Community involvement is how, community involvement in how we proceed will be critical, and I look forward to the input and guidance provided by our highly engaged board and commission members, who bring a wealth of experience and perspective to the table. Individuals will be contacted directly and asked to express their interest in serving on this task force to the city clerk's office by Friday, April 24th. It is anticipated this task force will meet virtually twice a month for the next several months. The meetings will be open to the public and recorded. Meanwhile, the city's boards and commissions will remain on hiatus for the foreseeable future, and only will meet if actionable business is required. I want to thank the council for your thoughtful comments during the feedback session at our last council meeting on April 6th, when we presented you the revenue projections for 2020. There were some consistent themes in your feedback. I have a generalized list of takeaways I would like to share with you this evening, prior to presenting the administration's expenditure reduction plan. I heard the following. Prioritize safety and security in our community. Prioritize utility service delivery and waste management. Recognize that our human services provider network is struggling, and our local economy will need significant assistance to get back on a good footing. Commit to the strategic plan vision, values, and action items, and recognize that it may take longer to get there. Our priorities are the same, our timeline has changed due to a changed economic outlook. Minimize layoffs, furloughs, and other impacts to employees. Try and maintain as many positions as possible and share the sacrifice. Eliminate consultant contracts and consider having staff complete work items as a way of preserving staff positions. I heard mixed opinions on the use of ending fund balance to supplant lost revenues and offset expenditures. And I heard a big shout-out for parks maintenance to maintain safe places for fresh air and exercise for a community with limited options for activity. And lastly, I heard quite strongly, temper the urge to cut all at once. Our city administrator and finance director will be presenting the expenditure reduction plan for 2020, and explaining the phased approach we are taking to ensure we are responding to the conditions as circumstances continue to evolve. It does focus on the priorities we heard on April 6th, and it does take a phased and flexible approach to addressing the revenue shortfall, though we may be able to adapt as more data is available. I have not, in this first phase, included use of the ending fund balance for any ongoing operational costs. As you will note, this first phase does not completely cover the possible revenue shortfalls we have projected. I assume at some future phase, and when additional data is analyzed, there may be the need to recommend the use of ending fund balance. At this point in time, we do not have sufficient information that allows us to foresee what the next eight months may bring, let alone what economic impacts may carry over to 2021. As we continue our response to this crisis, I am confident our dedicated city council, employees, and community will demonstrate, once again, Isicua's historic resilience and strength. I wanted to add a couple of extra points here at the end. I had an opportunity today to talk with Council President several times, and there's just a few more things I wanted to add to the Mayor's Report, in case the position that I'm taking and the administration is acting on is not entirely clear. We still want our desired outcomes, as we did from our strategic plan when we adopted it. They're absolutely the same, but we have reduced labor resources due to the significant projected revenue shortfall. Two points in particular are with regards to neighborhood engagement and our commitment to sustainability. We want both, and it is woven through the fiber of the goals and the objectives and the action steps in the strategic plan. We can't accomplish our vision and goals without remaining to hold up our commitment to neighborhood engagement and to sustainability. For at least a few months, perhaps longer, we are going to see a strain on staffing resources. And I just wanted to let everybody know who was questioning, in particular, those two areas, that we are committed, as a city, we are committed as an organization, and I know this is high priority for both the council and the community. The second point I wanted to make sure was clear to the public and the council that is here this evening, is I am the one that is responsible for the current layoff, furlough, vacancy, and payout plan. It's all me. It's administrative action. I own each and every one of these decisions, and I will tell you, they are very, very difficult decisions. If we don't have the revenue forecast, we're not going to realize the revenue forecast that was predicted for the 2020 budget. We cannot, we cannot continue on like we have that money coming in. We do not. And the council is being asked to approve tonight some policy, some human resources policy matters, that go with being able to enact on doing furloughs and other items. But I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, that I approved the plan, I wanted to ensure that the city remains financially viable today, next month, through 2020, and through 2021. And so this has been an extremely difficult process, but this is what I, this is what we need to do. Anyway, I hope those clarifications helped. I'm going to turn it over now for our first informational item. And that is ID 0683. It is a human services update, and is an informational item for council this evening with no additional, with no action requested. And I'd like to get Jeff Watling, our Parks and Community Services Director, to make a presentation. Jeff?
Mayor, thank you for meeting city council. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director with the city. Also on the line is Monica Negrella, our Human Services Coordinator, should you have any, any questions. My intent tonight, as, thank you, Tina and Tisha, as the PowerPoint presentation's coming up, is to go over this PowerPoint that was in the council packet, for those that might be following along on computer and their phone, they can find this in the agenda packet. It's really intended to just provide a broad overview of some of the work that we've been doing in, on the human services side of work these past eight weeks, really in response to COVID, and what's been going on in the community. So with that, now that it's set up, next slide, please. Great, so I thought in regards to COVID response, there's been a lot going on, obviously, within human services. Monica and I put this into three general categories of work that we'll go over. As I mentioned Monica's name before, she's just been doing a fantastic job, a number of staff within the department, as well as outside the department have also been lending So the first category, general category, are specific programs and initiatives that we've launched in response to COVID. The second category is our ongoing support to nonprofit agencies, both our local agencies and regional agencies that we historically partner with. And then the third category, and really in many ways most important, is our support to residents. So, within the programs and initiatives, I'll go into these a little further in the PowerPoint slides, but we really focused some new initiatives on two basic needs. Shelter, with our Emergency Rental Assistance Program that you're familiar with, that we discussed with you a couple of weeks ago, and food. And I'll touch on some collaborative work we've been doing with our numerous human services and nonprofit partners who provide needed food in this community. I'll touch on those again in some further slides. In regards to our support to nonprofit agencies, as I mentioned before, many of these are partners that we already have a contractual relationship with. We have spent a lot of time reaching out to them weekly, providing check-ins, checking on their resources and how they're doing, connecting them in some cases to grants and other funding opportunities, such as the small business grants that are also available for nonprofit agencies. Just to recall, even though we're focusing really through COVID on those basic needs of food and shelter, these partners provide really critical work in this time, and really any time, but certainly this time of crisis. And that's everything from our housing and sheltering partners, our partners who are providing legal assistance, violence and abuse, support and assistance, medical and behavioral health agencies, those agencies focusing on education and job skills, as folks may be having to begin to look at job transitions. All this has been really critical work through, through this, through this time. The third bucket, support to residents, again, a ongoing task that we're continually doing in human services, but has certainly become a heightened need these past eight weeks. This has involved really important coordination work that Monica, again, has done a terrific job with, but great support from other staff within the department, as well as within the organization, in terms of how we're educating and communicating to residents, opportunities, resources. Our communications team, Autumn and Thomas, have been fantastic in lending support there. Resource and referral is, again, a critical task that we do. We've seen a heightened number of phone calls coming to us, emails of residents asking and seeking resources for needs, whether that's everything, again, from housing to really any of our human services needs. Monica, along with the support of some of our recreation staff, have been able to keep that and address that, really heightened need for that response. I think along with addressing and really being available for the needs of our residents, I think what's been heartening in this eight-week effort is this communication with residents has also gone the other way. And, and we've seen an increase in residents, groups, agencies, support clubs, churches, reaching out to us, saying, how can we help? So, there's really been a big effort, in particular these past couple of weeks of COVID, as people are reaching out and wanting to help. And so, in a lot of ways, we're able, in this resource and referral, find ways to connect, connect those who want to help with those who need help. A little more focus on our two programs and initiatives that we've, we've launched in this time. Again, these first two slides touch on our emergency rental assistance, and again, thank you for your support in that, council. We've authorized $100,000 to go to some of our human services partners, of our agencies who've already been lending rental assistance, to really heighten their effort in this COVID time, just in the past weeks. As we've launched this, applications have certainly come in, as we all knew they would. Eighty-eight households have already not only applied for, but are receiving assistance. That represents 310 residents. Interestingly enough, and the data shows that, you know, of our requirements for this, we ask that all applicants be under 80% AMI. Seventy-seven percent of those households were below 50% AMI. We currently have two agencies that are contracted and providing this support, that's St. Vincent de Paul and Isicua Community Services. The third agency, Hope Link, we're continuing to work through some contractual items to get them on board to provide that. Within the staff report, Monica put together a really nice one-page sort of dashboard sample of some of this data that you'll find, you'll find attached there as well. Also, within emergency rental assistance, one of the questions that a number of you asked repeatedly the night this was adopted was, just a desire to know why, why the need for those that are going to be receiving it. And so this slide represents and shows of the 88 households that are receiving that rental assistance already. Sixty of those households are, were requesting this because of a layoff or a lost hours, in this case, full loss of hours, so perhaps they were furloughed. Twenty-three households were experiencing reduced hours of work. So we add those together, 95% of those that are receiving response were due to some type of unemployment, either loss of employment or significantly reduced hours. Four households were requesting this due to health-related problems or expenses, and one household you'll see on the slide was due to lack of childcare and inability to work because of that. Next slide. A second initiative, COVID-related initiative that we have launched, as I said earlier, relates to food. We have some amazing agencies in this city that provide food at some level to those in need, or are community members who are food insecure to some degree. We thought this was a very important time to convene those partners, as we were hearing from all of them. We've created a collaboration that we've already met a couple of times. We have seven organizations. The mayor's joined us, as well as King County Councilmember Lambert, as a, as a regional resource to King County. It's, they've been great conversations and a great opportunity to bring those groups together, to share, and to identify shared needs, shared issues, to, I think more importantly with those shared issues, explore shared opportunities and ways that this group can coordinate. Many of them already do, which is exciting to see, but it's really led to some further efforts of coordination. The goal in all of this work is to pull this group together and try and look ahead, not just look at the needs of today, but be looking 30, 60, 90 days out, to make sure collectively we can navigate this situation. Some of the outcomes that we're already focused on, and will continue to be meeting, we've committed to meeting every other week, along with obvious coordinations and collaborations that are happening in between. The outcomes have really, interestingly enough, and maybe not surprisingly, folk really landed on really the primary resource buckets, those buckets of supplies, whether it's procurement of food, whether it's other supplies that are needed. That second bucket of people, of staff, whether it's volunteers or staffing, and making sure groups are resourced to be able to provide those services. And then that last bucket... And then that last bucket, money, financially, what are we doing? How are we collectively aware of those needs and seeking those needs? And something that we've been able to communicate to this group is, we're one of those partners, we're one of those organizations. As the senior center that provides lunch, we are not necessarily, as this local agency, the monetary provider. We won't be able to fully fill that role, but how can we, and again, in a collaborative effort, combine our message, combine our story, and seek needs collectively? Next slide. So again, that's a quick overview of what we've been doing COVID-related, some last items real quickly, that work continues on some other fronts with the census going on at the same time. Again, big appreciation to our communications team. Mayor, I know you've really lent a lot of effort in this. Monica's done great work. We continue to promote and educate our residents to complete the census. We've had a very high response rate throughout, which is, which is great to see. Continued communication and support of our human services contracts and agencies is really important work that we continue to do, and we need to be aware of the horizon as well, that the 2021, 2022 application process is something that's underway right now. We've actually extended the application time, just due to the situation we're in, to May 15th. Applications need to be submitted, so we'll continue the staff work and the work with commission in some form to begin working through those applications through the summer and be ready for a recommendation this fall for 21, 22 funding. So with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm just gonna add a quick little FYI onto the end of your report, and that is a note of appreciation to you and Monica for helping me in my outreach with our Congresswoman to be able to explain that the aid packages that the federal government are giving out right now are not necessarily addressing the shortfalls that are, human services agencies are facing. While they have the paycheck replacement program, many of our nonprofits run on a shoestring of salaries, and their bigger component costs have to do with supplies and materials, which there currently is no aid package out to help them with, and that we've been working with the Congresswoman to try and educate her and have her work to provide relief directly to our nonprofit networks, either through the aid package and also take into consideration their ability to fundraise has been completely decimated by the lack of activities that they can hold, the face-to-face luncheons and breakfasts, and it could take up to 30% of their revenue away as they are expending, you know, over 25 to 40% more than they normally do. So it's quite a financial crisis for them, and I appreciate everything that you and Monica are doing. I wanted at this point in time to ask Council President Hunt if there was any email comments that you wanted to summarize that the council may have received this week on this particular informational item.
Yes, this is Council President Hunt, is my audio. Okay?
It is good.
Okay, great. We did receive one email that specifically referenced this item, and that was an email from Steve Pereira. He stated that he remains convinced that this was a positive community response, meaning the program for rental assistance. And he also wondered about the future of the program, including changes to the criteria and extension of the program.
Thank you. And I noticed, Council President Hunt, that you also have a question on the presentation.
Yes, thank you. So that was a comment from a member of the community, and then this is my personal question. We are roughly 50% of the way through dispersment of the funds for the rental assistance program. And I wondered if you could speak to the rate at which those funds are being dispersed, when we might expect that we would be, perhaps, then be originally allotted $100,000? And then also next steps for the program, if council were to consider extending or next steps?
Yes, thanks for that question, sorry, as I was fumbling with fingers. Thanks for that question. So, yeah, as we are nearing 50%, we anticipate that funding going through in the next, in the next month. We had anticipated, Monica and I, there's some more specific emergency rental assistance questions that we are sort of framing up and wanting to discuss with administration, and we're planning on coming back with a more specific conversation about the emergency rental assistance program on May the 4th. I had mentioned earlier, one of the funding partners, Hope Link. We have a decision to make and some options to explore in terms of either lending some flexibility to the program that could help them provide that assistance, or finding other ways to have the other two partners continue in lending that support. So program is going well, it's going rather quickly in terms of the funding, and we would, again, anticipate coming back May the 4th.
Thank you. I see that Deputy Council President Ray has a comment.
I do. Hi, this is Chris Ray. It was really important to me when we put this program together, that we ensured that those with the greatest need and those with needs resulting from the COVID-19 outbreak were the people who were being served by this program. So I just wanted to thank Monica and Jeff and the rest of the team for the data that they provided to give us a sense of who it is that's benefiting from this program. It really helps us to make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we desired. So a big, big thank you to Monica and Jeff.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. I see Councilmember D. Michelle has a comment.
Thank you, this is Councilmember D. Michelle. First of all, I think that we've had, seen a tremendous effort on the part of our Parks and Recreation and Human Services folks, so thank you so much for that. I do think that the rental assistance program has been very well received by the community. I've heard nothing but positive comments about that program. On the food security collaboration, you know, reflecting on the bigger picture of human services, I feel like this is something that we, this was, we really had a good time to look at something that probably should have been done before, and I really appreciate the city's leadership on that. Can you speak to how this group might continue even after we're into a recovery mode? And just the whole concept of coordinating our food distribution in a very strategic and equitable way? What are the long-term fixtures you see for this group? And then I do have another question after that.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle. Director Watling, feel free to answer, although I know internally we have not been able yet to sit down and go past the next couple of months, but if you have some thoughts on that, please feel free to share.
You bet, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember D. Michelle, great point, and I guess I would just add that I think we see the opportunity of this convening, the same way you do, is really an opportunity as relationships are, they've always been there, these groups have always partnered, but to do so in such a focused effort really does create the opportunity for it to continue in some way, shape, or form. So no formal design what that would look like, other than, boy, it'd be great, because I think collaboration is a powerful thing.
Thank you, Director Watling. Councilmember D. Michelle, you have an additional question or a comment?
Additional question? I know one of the tasks that the human services has been given is city oversight of our Holiday Inn Recovery Center, and I'm wondering if you have any information about that project? That, again, is one that I think the community is very interested in, in getting information about. So I wonder if there's just a short overview of what's happening there.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle. The Issaquah Recovery Center is a King County-administered facility, and City Administrator Bob Quitz can probably share a brief update of what we know today.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we are in regular, excuse me, regular touch with the county through our partners at Eastside Fire and Rescue and the Issaquah Police Department, checking, the fire district especially has done a great job of checking in with that facility. About 30 or 35 individuals were there at last count. The fire district had two emergency calls, I think just yesterday, at the facility. So I think it's been operating very well. The mayor worked very closely with the county executive, Constantine, to make sure that the facility is safe. Asked for right off the bat, a fence, permanent fence that was erected around the facility. There is a Washington State Police officers stationed there around the clock, as well as private security. We've just been trying to be good community partners with all, and so far the facility has done what it's supposed to do, and that is provide a place for those who are either with a COVID-19 test result or recovering from a positive test result that does not require hospitalization. I think it's worked very well for the larger community. In addition, the mayor asked for the county executive that a memorandum of understanding be entered into between the county and the city on the use of the facility and the future use of the property after the crisis passes. And thanks to the good work of City Attorney Jim Haney, he worked with the King County's prosecutor's office, and an MOU was executed just today. So we will make that available to the council, we'll post it on our website, so that everyone has an understanding. We, this is not something that's happened in every community, but it's something that Mayor Polly wanted very specifically at the beginning of this process, and the county executive was kind enough to have the staff work with our staff to execute that. So that was just done today, and we'll make copies available to you shortly.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, you're on mute again.
Oh my gosh, okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle, thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz, and thank you, Councilmember Walsh, for keeping me in a good place. With no further questions or comments at this point in time, I'd like to move on to our next item, which is ID 0682. It's an economic development update, and I'd like to ask Jen Davis Hayes, our Ecoma Economic Development Manager, to make a brief presentation to the council. Jen?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me tonight. As she mentioned, my name is Jen Davis Hayes, and I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city. We're here tonight to talk a brief out, update about our activity just to help businesses through this challenging times. And you can go to the next slide, please, so we'll be on slide number two. So basically, updating about our core focus areas, and to share about how we work a lot with our partners to move things forward. Move on to our next slide. As part of our normal, old normal, I would call it, economic development activities, we would reach out to approximately 50 businesses a year to discuss how business was going, connect with them about resources to help their business and problem solve. We kicked this effort into high gear at the beginning of the pandemic. Thanks to some reassigned staff from other departments, we initially started calling restaurants to learn to see if they were going to remain open or temporarily close. Our next focus went to banks, other retailers, and then continued on to other types of businesses. We coordinated with the city's efforts around food security to help connect the businesses with nonprofits, and we're currently partnering with the Amy Dukes, our Arts Administrator, to reach out to for-profit creative businesses. So right now, our business outreach calls is near 200, that we, and I say "we," meaning the city, has done directly. But our partners with Chamber, Dia, Gilman Village Merchants Association, Visit Issaquah, have more than doubled our connection with these businesses. They've been able to answer questions and shared with us trends and other business needs they discovered. We've also received inquiries directly from businesses or residents about business practices. So we've had about 50 or more of those. So thanks to our outstanding efforts of our communication team, we have greatly enhanced our city's COVID-19 business resource webpage, actually several times, with the information we've collected. So we've used that as a resource of direct business to help answer their initial questions and to guide them for other resources. And we've also had to reach out to businesses when we are contacted with concerns from residents about physical distancing, operations, and clarifying the changes of the bag ban and other things. But calling businesses can be challenging. Some businesses are too busy to talk, and others aren't answering their phones. So we created a new business newsletter that currently has over 3,500 subscribers. And anyone can sign up for this, it's on our city's COVID-19 business resource website, and at the bottom of the section under the Contact Us, you can sign up today if you'd like that. We just sent one out today. The topics included our new technical assistance through our partners at Startup 425, this week's Chamber webinar, and small business grant information from Facebook and Salesforce, as well as our effort to collect videos to promote businesses and help us showcase how they're still open, whether that's in person or online, and how they've implemented physical distance and items. Next slide, please. So early on, we partnered with the Chamber to do a business survey. So you'll see here that from March 11th through the 18th, we received about 36 responses. We closed the survey at that time because the region, the region started a region-wide business survey, so we imported our data into that. So as you can imagine, this information in the survey is already out of date. In fact, those businesses who completed the survey on March 11th may have answered very differently by March 18th, but does give us a glimpse into the initial concerns. So as you'll see, the biggest needs that people talked about was financial assistance and customers, the lack of customers, and we know that that still stands true, and concerned about their ongoing ability to pay payroll, make rent, and maintain viability. If you look at the impact to revenue chart here, that about 25% said no or low impact to their business revenues, I think that the stay-at-home order has changed those numbers drastically. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we closed down that survey because the larger regional survey was started with the Greater Seattle Partners, as well as City of Seattle and other partners to look at business impacts. That was opened through April 1st, and this is some, a few slides from the data about the Eastside business responses. The full infographic for the Eastside business responses are on, in the council packet, if you're more interested in seeing more information. So the first slide is about how worried you are about your business, and so here we see about a quarter of businesses have about some worries. We're about three-quarters worry in some form about being able to stay open. Next slide, please. The next, the next slide talks about, highlights the business concerns with lack of cash reserves as they're top concern, temporary closures and other items that address not having revenues are all close second and third. So the Eastside Coalition that we're working with is in discussions with the consultant who did the regional business survey to see if we can get data for Issaquah-specific businesses, and we'll definitely share that with you if we do receive that. And to see, make sure, we want to make sure that these trends hold for Issaquah businesses. There is a plan to do another survey next week, and then a further one, a third one, when businesses reopen later. We're in communication right now to see how we can take part in that as well. Next slide, please. So I mentioned before, a lot of our time has been researching and learning more about the resources that are out there. So we add these to our website, we share via newsletter, and inform in our 101 calls. So this is a list of type of information that we have become familiar enough to be able to provide answers at a very high level, or at least know where the most accurate information is for people. I won't go into detail about all these items except for one, which is something that just kicked off today, and that is, we build upon our Startup 425 collaboration with other Eastside cities. So over the past four years, we have provided business assistant webinars, I'm sorry, not webinars, seminars in our libraries. We pivoted that to now do those in our libraries. We pivoted that to now do those online. And we have also hired a technical assistance organization, Business Impact Northwest, to provide one-on-one technical assistance for businesses to help and get prepared for financial or other business needs as they are working their way back into business. That information, you can find on our city's website. Next slide, please. And so sometimes it's hard to remember that there are many businesses that are still open and actually operating. So we've done several things to help promote businesses that are either open or online during this time. First, we've encouraged businesses to send us a short video highlighting their business and ending with that "We've got this, Issaquah" ad line. We've received about two dozen, and we compiled it and are sharing on social media. We're also collecting these videos till the end of this month, and we will send out another video and promote businesses as well. Because of the effort we did early on with reaching out to businesses, we were able to quickly populate an Eastside Google map highlighting restaurants that are currently open. So this is now available on the Startup 425 website, which is linked from our website. We are working with our Eastside Coalition to actually expand this map to include businesses that are, other businesses that are online or open for business. Both of these resources have been widely shared by our economic development partners. Next slide, please. And I can't say enough about our partnerships that we've enhanced. So what we call our vision partners, so that's a partnership of our local economic development organizations you see here. So the Chamber, Downtown Issaquah Association, Gilman Village Merchants Association, Visit Issaquah, and the Issaquah Highlands Council. We've been meeting as a group since, monthly since January. And since the beginning of this pandemic, we are in communication almost daily via email, phone calls, and on a weekly call. So their efforts have greatly enhanced what we are able to do. They're reaching out to their businesses, they're creating their own COVID-19 webpages, they've created special highlight marketing for their open businesses in downtown and the Highlands. The Chamber has hosted webinars. The Visit Issaquah is our lifeline to learning more about the hotel and hospitality industries. And the Gilman Village Merchants Association has been really key about helping us to better understand the retail business. I also wanted to mention, we've hosted now three calls with our commercial property managers and owners in Issaquah. Helps us to better understand what they're hearing from their businesses and what trends are happening in the commercial real estate world. Next slide, please. And this is a quick look at all the regional economic development partners that we've been on weekly calls with and listening to their webinars to share information and better understand resources. I won't go into details about all of our work we're doing with these folks, but there are some talks about buy local and welcome back campaigns. So more information as that gets developed. And I do want to say that I'm really thankful also for our Port of Seattle grant that we have. As you know, we receive about $40,000 a year for economic development activities, and they have been very supportive and encouraging of us to pivot that original scope and to look for ways to support businesses and people to get back to work. So that's really great to hear. Next slide. So what's next? So we will continue to do our business outreach, education, and promotion. We are still in the response mode of this. Businesses are learning how to kind of, to operate better in these times, but things are still changing for them. We'll explore new business funding, I'm sorry, new funding opportunities. For instance, in the federal stimulus package, there was some money for the Economic Development Administration at the federal level to help regions. And so we'll be looking at working with our regional partners on some efforts there. We'll be looking at LTAC funding and how we can better utilize that money to support our hospitality and tourism businesses. And then we'll look at other federal funding as that becomes available for economic development activities. We need to, of course, rethink our current year planned activities. We will focus on retaining our businesses and less so on recruiting businesses, but of course, do both. We had a job fair scheduled for May 12th at Pickering Barn. We have postponed that. We have not rescheduled the date yet, but we are working with our employers to determine if an in-person one makes sense or if we do a virtual one instead. We have some other activities that in such a large group, it's hard to do a Skype call. So we were planning to do a first annual business summit in June. We have an annual brokers forum and some other activities. So we'll look at how to best do that. And then recovery planning is really important. As the mayor mentioned, she's putting together a task force to think about that from a city level. We've been thinking and having starting discussions around economic development and in the larger region, and our Eastsides and on our city. And we started asking businesses what they'll need, but it's hard for them to have clarity because, it's hard for them to know because there's not clarity about timing or precautions that need to be taken. So we will definitely back with more information about how that progresses. And that's it for my presentation.
Thank you, Jen. Make sure everybody's muted, please.
That's me banging the back.
Thank you, Jen. Before we go to councilmember questions and comments, what I would like to do is see if Council President Hunt has any email comments that she received related to this item that she would like to share with the council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. We did receive one email that specifically referenced this item, and that was from Steve Perera. And to summarize his comments, he thought it was important that we receive more information about the actions that are being taken regarding economic development and economic recovery, and also the results from those actions.
Thank you. And I see that Councilmember Marts has a comment or a question. Looks like a question.
I do. This is Councilmember Marts. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jen, I'm wondering if in the surveys that you did or in the outreach that you did to the business community, whether you got any sense from them about the sort of duration aspects? In other words, you asked them about their concerns about the ability to weather this. Had you got, did you wind up getting any feedback or any sense from the business community about, you know, we just don't know whether this is a, you know, this is the beginning of May, it may extend beyond the beginning of May? We don't really know, right? It's going to be dependent on public health data. Did you get any sense from them on like, oh, four weeks is fine, but 12 weeks is not fine, or anything having to do with the duration and its impact on their ability to weather this emergency? Thanks.
Yeah, that's a great question. And so often, they ask us, when do you think we're going to be able to reopen? So it is a lot of dependent on the public health actions that need to be in place for us to reopen. It's really dependent also on the business. So some businesses have planned out a thirty, sixty, and ninety-day operation plan, and some businesses are really struggling to figure out how to get through next month's rent. So it is really all over the board. I think the East, that slide that we saw earlier with, you know, how many businesses feel like they can make it through, but it's very rough, versus I think I can go out, I may go out of business, so we had a small percentage who thought they couldn't even make it. And we've heard anecdotally about some businesses that will not reopen. But I think a lot of it also may depend if they receive resources from the SBA programs, which are hopefully going to be refunded, have new funding available for more businesses. So I think it's, it changes every day, but people, businesses are very resilient, and they're entrepreneurial, and they're doing things like creating ways to go online and other revenues sources so they can do what they can to keep their employees and themselves in business.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Councilmember Walsh, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Jen, I just wanted to express to you that I've heard from many in the business community that they're very appreciative of the work that you and the Economic Development Group has done in this crisis. And so kudos to you for not just, you know, taking this on and growing the number of contacts so dramatically. On that note, if there is a business that has questions, wants to reach out, you've mentioned the website and the newsletter that's on there. Anything else that they should do if they need to reach out?
Yes, thank you. And again, it's a team effort. So I appreciate our ability to have other city staff to help us, our communications team who is always on the spot and able to help us. So folks can, if you're a part of an organization that was listed, either the Chamber or Downtown Issaquah Association or others, you can reach out to them. You can also reach out to myself directly, and my contact information is on the website, but it's, you can email me at jenh@issaquawwa.gov, and we will be sure to get back to you and help direct you to the right information.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you for your comment, Councilmember Walsh. Seeing no additional council questions or comments, I'm going to move on to our third informational item this evening, which is ID 0684, the COVID Response Phase One Budget Plan. And I'd like to ask Beth Goldberg, Finance Director, to make the presentation. Thank you, Beth. Assuming that she can find the unmute button better than I can.
Sorry, baby. I didn't want you to feel like left out with that unmute button.
That's awesome. Thank you.
So I will be presenting tonight. My name is Beth Goldberg. I'm the Finance Director who cannot find the mute button. And we'll be presenting the Phase One Budget Plan in response to our revised revenue forecast. If we can move to the next slide, please. So the purpose tonight is to provide an overview of the administration's Phase One Underspend Plan. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we are looking at this as a multi-phased effort. Given the size of the financial challenges that we're facing, we do feel like this is going to take a multi-phased approach. And the plan that I'm presenting tonight is intended to align with the mayor's priorities that she spoke about earlier this evening. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So by way of background, presented at the April 6th, the last regular council meeting, an updated general fund revenue forecast in response to the current COVID emergency. And that forecast projected a $10 million decline in general fund revenues. That represents about 20% of general fund revenues. Since that time, two weeks has passed, we have unfortunately seen no indication in the past two weeks that have, has led us to see an improved outlook. And if anything, we've seen data that suggests that we remain in very murky waters. So the unemployment rate continues to increase at a staggering pace. Last week, this is national data I'm about to cite, 5.2 million additional individuals applied for unemployment, bringing the total unemployment applications to 22 million in four weeks. But for context, in the two years during the Great Recession, those number, that number was 8.8 million, 8.8 million people, excuse me. So 22 million in four weeks. We've also, the stay-at-home orders have continued, and while we don't know when it's going to end, it is likely that it will persist. And certainly, all indications are that any return to normal will be gradual. So some people have said it won't be like turning a light switch on, that we'll see a gradual return to normal. So that may also impact the revenue forecasts. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So the Phase One Plan in particular focuses on reducing general fund expenditures, and the largest portion of our general fund is for personnel costs. So there are a number of personnel reductions that we are recommending in the Phase One. We're also reducing salary and benefit costs for nonrepresented employees and making work plan and service delivery modifications. In future phases, we will look at other parts of the general fund. So for example, the street operating fund receives several million dollars from the general fund, and we will be taking a closer look at that. We will also be looking at the non-general funds. So for example, REIT, our municipal arts fund, which receives admissions tax, which is expected to decline with theaters and movie theaters and live theaters closed, we'll be looking at that. We'll be looking at real estate excise tax, the REIT fund as well. We will also be looking for additional salary and benefits savings for our represented employees. Any change to the salary and benefits for represented employees must be negotiated with our labor unions. So those discussions are ongoing, and we will report back on those at a later phase in this process. We could go to the next slide, please. So before laying this out, and the mayor spoke to this briefly also in her opening remarks tonight, want to make clear roles and responsibilities as we enter this unusual situation of having to do mid-year budget reductions. The mayor, as you know, is the Chief Executive Officer, and in that role, she executes the annual budget that the council approves. And then she has authority to underspend the annual budget or make personnel decisions as she sees fit as the Chief Executive Officer. Meantime, the council sets the policy and approves the annual budget. So most of what we're presenting tonight is within the mayor's authority, but there are elements of this plan that will require council action. So you'll hear me speaking later tonight about, or later in this presentation, about components of this plan that involve furloughing, nonrepresented, our non-unionized staff, and also salary reductions for our senior leadership. And those will require council action to approve. That's on the regular business agenda later this evening. We are also recommending some changes to benefits for our non-unionized employees, and that also will require council action, and we will be bringing that back to council later in May. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So for the Phase One, we, this slide summarizes where we are. So we have identified $6 million worth of reductions. This represents about 12% of the general fund. It is offset by about $1.2 million worth of ads. This is mainly cashouts and one-time costs associated with eliminating positions in the organization. So that includes like vacation cashouts, sick leave cashouts, things of that nature. It also includes about $138,000 that we are allocating for each employee, each terminated employee, to provide them the funds to secure medical benefits for the next three months. So given that we are in the middle of a health crisis, the administration, the mayor, thought it was important that we provide additional resources to these employees to make sure their medical benefits are covered for the next three months. So the net impact of all of this is just under $5 million to the general fund. That's about halfway to the $10 million gap that we are projecting. As the mayor indicated, that's not closing the gap completely, and we don't want to be relying on fund balance at this point. So the work we're going to be doing in subsequent phases will be looking at the revenue data as it continues to come in, as well as additional opportunities for savings, so that we can hopefully get closer to closing that gap. I should also mention before leaving this slide that among the ads that you're seeing reflected here was the funds for the rental assistance program that Jeff Watling spoke about earlier this evening. If we can move to the next slide, please. So want to provide an overview of the approach to the reductions that we made to the general fund. I mentioned that we looked at personnel changes. This was a necessity difficult, but a necessity given that most of our general fund expenses are for personnel costs. We also looked at reducing discretionary expenses. So this includes no more travel and training for the rest of the year, no more discretionary purchases, we're capturing the savings from that. We're also making service delivery changes and some work plan changes. Before moving off of this slide, I should also mention that we are capturing $350,000 of debt service savings. I should also mention that we are capturing $350,000 of debt service savings. We are expected to finalize the loan for the work on Southeast 43rd at the end of May, beginning of June. The interest rates on that loan are coming in at a very favorable rate. We also did a bond refunding at the end of last year. And the favorable interest rate climate is meaning that our debt service costs are lower than what we originally anticipated when the 2020 budget was adopted. So we are capturing that savings as part of this effort. If we can move to the next slide, please. So this slide shows a graphic of how the $6 million in reductions fall across various spending categories. So 67% of the reductions are the result of changes in our personnel costs. Another 23% is from changes to our general operating expenses. Professional services makes up 7% of the reductions. And then we're making some reductions in transfers to other funds that round out the $6 million. We can move to the next slide, please. So this next slide is another breakdown of how the reductions spread among the various expense categories. The personnel reductions, personnel costs represent about 52% of the overall budget. The percentage of cuts is less than that at 15.5%. Also, recall, there was a lot of discussion at the last council meeting about council's desire to reduce professional services expenses. So professional services expenses represent about 7% of the total budget. But from the cuts, it represents about, it's a 10% cut to the professional services budget overall for the general fund. We can move to the next slide, please. So now I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the reductions we're making to personnel costs. And as the mayor indicated in her opening remarks this evening, none of these changes are easy. They were all very difficult decisions. But the financial reality did mean that we needed to look at our personnel costs. So the Phase One Plan that I'm presenting tonight includes the elimination of 22 positions through either layoffs or retirements. This spans across eight departments. These positions are eliminated effective May 1st and are expected to continue through at least the end of the year. And depending on our outlook, would continue into next year. Collectively, these layoffs will save $1.6 million for the rest of 2020. And I see there's a question, so maybe I'll pause there.
Thank you, Beth. You're going to have to... Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I just had a question. We're using words like eliminating positions. And I just want to make sure that I understand what is really being proposed or really doing, I guess. And that is, we still have, in order for us to have an employee or a person in place, we have to have both a position and it has to be funded. So any of the reduction in personnel costs that's being done here, we still have the positions, and they still would be technically funded. Is that true? We're not eliminating anything? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, so this plan that we're putting forward is resulting in positions that are, people that are currently occupying these 22 positions. As of May 1st, they will no longer occupy those positions. We are not, as part of this plan, asking council to adopt a new budget that would lower that funding or would eliminate those FTEs. Rather, we will be amassing that underspend to match what we are anticipating to be lower than expected revenues. So one option could certainly be coming to the council and asking the council to adopt a new budget. But the other strategy, and the one that we're recommending here, is that we reduce that spending and allow that savings to accumulate, to offset what we are anticipating the revenue hit to be.
Sure, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that I understand the technicalities and you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, so in addition to the 22 positions, we are also going to be freezing 15 currently vacant positions across five departments. These are over and above the seven positions that were frozen in the 2020 adopted budget. So that will bring the number of frozen positions to 22. The additional positions, the additional 15 positions will save us $1.5 million for the rest of the year. We're recommending, or we will be reclassifying two existing positions to lower job classifications. That will save $101,000. We will be implementing a 10-day furlough, assuming council approves that recommendation later this evening for our non-unionized personnel effective May 1st. It will be 10 days to be used between May 1st and the end of 2020. This will represent a 5.8% salary reduction for those employees and will generate an estimated $183,000 worth of savings to the city. Separate from that, for our senior leadership, and that includes the department directors, the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, they, assuming council approves this later this evening, will be taking a 7% salary reduction for the balance of 2020. And that generates $63,000 worth of savings. And just to clarify, the senior leadership will not be participating in the furlough. They will be taking just the salary reductions. And then we are also recommending eliminating and reducing certain fringe benefits, such as some match funds for some of our retirement funds that will be coming to the council for consideration later in May. Assuming council approves these changes, this will generate $268,000 worth of savings for the city through the balance of 2020. So if we could move to the next slide, please. So this slide provides...
Councilmember Hunt would like to ask a question.
Hi, this is Council President Hunt. Sorry to interrupt. On the last slide, I just wanted to take a moment to clarify the roles and responsibilities because on that slide, there were things that were the purview of the administration and mayor, and then also purview of council. Is it possible to go back to that slide? Yes. So it's my understanding, and please confirm this if it's correct, that the layoffs and the freezing, those are the purview of the mayor and administration. The reclassification is the purview of the council, but not something that will be considered this evening, but at a later date. Then the 10-day furlough and the reducing senior leadership salaries by 7% will be considered by council this evening. And then I think reducing benefits also is purview of council. Is that all correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this next slide provides a summary of the departments and the positions, or the positions being eliminated in the departments under which they fall. And again, there are 22 positions being eliminated across eight departments.
Beth, this is the mayor again. I think for the rest of the meeting, I appreciate Councilmember Goodman's question. It is a little inaccurate to describe them as eliminated positions. Because those positions are still in place. The individuals who occupy those positions are not staying with the organization. So just maybe we should not be using the word eliminated positions anymore. I think it causes some confusion with the public.
Okay, so if we can move to the next slide, please. So other positions that are impacted, as I mentioned previously, we've got 15 positions that are frozen. The departments that are impacted by this are listed on this slide. And then also mentioned that we are recommending the downreclassification of two positions that are listed at the bottom of this slide. If we can move to the next slide, please. So in total, this plan impacts 34.5 FTEs that will no longer be filled. This represents the loss of approximately 48,000 staff hours. If we can move to the, although actually I see there's maybe another question.
Thank you, Director. Yes, Councilmember DeMichele would like to ask a question.
Yeah, I have a question. It's really about how the implementation of the furlough will take place. Having gone through a furlough myself, I know it sometimes, especially when you have very dedicated employees, as we do, that it starts to blur. I know those days are going to be scattered over the next couple of months. Are there going to be, or is there going to be a process whereby we ensure that those furlough days are furlough days and don't morph into unpaid workdays?
Yeah, we are working on the implementation plan for the furlough plan prior to May 1st. So those are some details that we're working out. But I think the furlough plan that you're speaking of might have been the one at King County that I was behind devising. So I'm very familiar with the specifics of what you're talking about. And those are things that we will be talking about in the coming days.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. City Administrator Bob Kowits would like to add a comment.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor members of the council, Councilmember DeMichele. We are also asking each of our employee units to also take the 10-day furlough. And so as we are negotiating with them, I think what we're trying to do is find the best balance. I think the point that Councilmember DeMichele made is a good one about making sure that the furlough days are actually taken. I think we're looking at a, perhaps a mix of fixed dates that in essence, city operations would not occur, as well as dates at large that neutral employees can take. I think we want to make sure we come up with a good balance that is respectful to the employees and respectful to the community. And so we're still working on that. But we want to make sure that whatever we come up with is a good balance. And we need to do this and have it planned in place by May 1st. So I would imagine by the first part of next week, we'll have that information to the city councils as well as our employees who are affected.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
I see that Councilmember Goodman has a question for the director.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Our council also receives a salary or stipend, whatever you want to call it. Is there somewhere in the presentation that we, where that's talked about, whether that's being considered or not?
Councilmember Goodman, members of the council, when we get to the item on the regular business agenda, we can speak to that.
Thank you.
Director Goldberg? You may be unmuted.
Sorry, I thought I'd unmute. I think I double-clicked. Sorry. Can we move to the next slide, please? So this is a chart that we showed during the 2020 adopted budget deliberations that shows the trend of our FTEs since 2008. To continue to, the clarification that seems to be a theme this evening, while we are not eliminating any positions tonight or recommending the elimination of any FTEs, the changes that we are recommending tonight will drop our filled FTE level to 237.38. And this is down below the pre-Great Recession levels. In fact, it's down to about the levels that we were at in 2004. And if we can move to the next slide, you'll see another chart that depicts this that we also used during the 2020 budget deliberations. And what you'll see on this slide is that the filled positions are roughly at the 2004 levels. But the city's population has more than doubled since 2004. So the message continues to be that we are serving more residents with fewer FTE resources. So if we can move now to the next slide, please. So I mentioned that in addition to the personnel changes, we are looking at service delivery changes. We are capturing about $200,000 worth of savings from the current closures. So for example, the community center, the swimming pool are currently closed. And we don't have part-time staff working at those facilities. So we are capturing that savings. In addition, once we open back up again because of our revenue picture, we are recommending reducing the hours and access for parks facilities. So this would include the community center, the pool, senior center, Pickering Barn, and Tibbetts Creek Manor. The ones I just mentioned will remain open. Tibbetts Creek Manor will be closed. In addition, we are recommending, as part of this plan of eliminating the expedited permit review program, we are reducing staff support for the neighborhood engagement program. But that does not mean that neighborhood engagement is not a priority. That will remain a priority. That workload will be absorbed by remaining staff. In addition, we're eliminating staff dedicated to processing passports. That was one of the first things that closed in response to the COVID emergency. And we are expecting that there will be very little demand for that once city facilities open again. And then last, we're reducing staff support for video production capabilities. Again, this does not mean that we won't be video recording meetings, council meetings, things of that nature. We will just have less backup staff for those capabilities. And then just one thing that is important to underscore in all of this that is we're making staff changes as significant as the ones we're proposing here. It will reduce our capacity to manage day-to-day work. And so just want to highlight that. And then I see there's a bunch of questions and comments that people want to make. So I will pause there.
Thank you. Waiting for Beth to mute. I see that Council President Hunt has a question.
I just, thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I wanted to confirm that we don't at this time plan on reducing the number of commission meetings or coverage of commission or council meetings. And this was a question that has also been raised by several members of the community by email.
That's correct. It will be absorbed with existing staff. So we will still have staff to do those recordings.
Thank you.
I also have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I think this point of overall reduction in capacity to manage day-to-day work is important. And we've heard from several community members about wanting a sense of what are going to be the impacts? What are going to be the impacts on parks and rec availability or cleanup of... or cleanup of trash in parks or, you know, all of the other things that the city does as a service. I know we're responding very quickly to this. I know we may not have that information at this point. Do you have a sense of when we are going to have a better understanding of the kind of percentage impacts to certain service areas and when we can get back to the community about that?
City Administrator Bob Kowits, did you want to start the answer?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and actually if we could go to the next slide, that I think helps answer the question. And that really, at least in part for the answer to the question, is the council's work plan. The staff has looked at these changes that have been proposed by the mayor. We have looked at the work plan, and this slide talks about those things that we believe that we're not going to be able to move forward with, with the same schedule of the work plan that was adopted by the city council back in January. So what we would like to do is at your next meeting on Monday, May the 4th, is come back to you with the work plan, share with you what we believe the impacts will be to the work plan based on the staffing model and get feedback. And if the council is not satisfied with any portion of what we think we're not going to be able to do, we will then be able to come back two weeks later with either solutions for additional funding, additional changes to the budget in order to do that. But really, all of this does lead back to the work plan. We need the council to consider those changes, and so we'll do that on May the 4th. As far as other impacts to the, to the reductions, I think one of the things we want to try to focus on as we continue the year, as we were looking to do prior to the COVID-19, is really look at what are the, what are the service delivery requirements? What are the outcomes that the council is really looking to do? And I think if we can try to quantify through an outcome basis what changes there may be, and then if the council is not satisfied, allow us to look and see how we could change the allocation of resources to meet those outcomes, we would like to do that. I think some of this is still a little bit early. I think certainly our entire Parks Recreation Program remains up in the air at this point. And we want to be mindful as the state reopens for business and we rethink how we're going to do Parks Rec, for example, how that works out. Other things such as communications, transportation, sustainability, we want to focus again on the outcome. We want to focus on the outcomes that are in the work plan and really try to focus all available resources that we have to continue to provide those services. But again, the reality is, I think some things may not get done, and certainly some things may not get done with the speed that we had hoped to when 2020 began.
Thank you, City Administrator. Councilmember Walsh, does that answer your question?
It tells me that we don't have the information. While I appreciate the comment on focusing on outcomes, I think the clarity that I'm looking for on that is the ability to communicate to the public the, not percentage of changes, but what they should expect from service levels from the city going forward with this large of a staffing change. I just, I want to be able to be very clear to the public about, you know, maybe expectation setting. And so I'm not, I'm not getting what that is, but I think partially that's just because we don't quite know yet.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, let me try to, to take the question from a different approach. As I think we stated at the beginning, based on the council's discussion two weeks ago, we want to ensure first and foremost that public safety is number one. The changes that you're seeing in the police department budget with reduction or the holding open vacant positions, we have done with an eye to make sure that the police response to time, the police response to calls will continue to be what people are accustomed to. Those other changes in the police department will be non-patrol-related changes. So if we have issues, we have incidents, people call 911, expect a police officer to be there. That police officer will be there with the same resources that we've had prior to COVID-19. The second piece, which we've not talked about yet this evening, is fire service. We are part of a joint agreement with several other communities which make up the Eastside Fire and Rescue Fire Service. That is a fixed contract amount. At this point, there are no changes to that. We have asked, the mayor has sent a letter to Eastside Fire and Rescue's board directors asking them for, to consider their budget as we are considering our budget. But our first priorities again have been police and fire services. We look at public works, making sure our water comes to our residents, make sure the sewer service works, make sure that the roads are in good repair. Those are all priorities. And when you add up police and fire and those public works issues that are from the general fund, that's a large chunk of our budget. So we're committed to focus and provide those services pretty much as they're being provided today. So a lot of these cuts are affecting everything else. And so I think we want our residents to understand that we're focusing on public safety, focusing on the delivery of those essential services. But everything else, you can expect to see some reductions in time. You can expect to see projects and initiatives take a little bit longer to do in order to make up the deficit. And again, as Beth has stated, it's only $5 million. We think there's another $5 million needed based on our best estimates. So I think Councilmember Walsh, the message to the community is we're going to take care of those essential services. Anything that's not essential is going to have an impact.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I also think you made a good point in that we're at the beginning of this and we're responding to a financial crisis. And at some point, there'll be a plateau or a leveling off, and we will have a much better picture of what our financial reality looks like. And the city may look and feel a little different at that point, and we'll be able to have a narrative that we can share. So it just, right now, I just don't know that we can put something together that would make a lot of sense. We're not even sure if we're done with the cuts yet. So I do see that Councilmember Martz has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think if we're talking about the impact to the community, I think we have to, I have to, I think we have to be clear. The four open recs for the Issaquah Police Department represent, for those who follow the budget of the last few years, we had, I actually had an analogy of leading a deer, right? If you're, if you're trying to bag a deer, you shoot a little bit in front of the deer, and the deer and the bullet sort of wind up meeting at the same space. And having extra recs for the IPD historically has been important because once you decide you want to, you want to hire, it takes a while to, and you may hire for, for reasons of retirement or injury or somebody who just, you know, falls in love and decides they're going to move to Corvallis or whatever. And it takes a while to hire. It takes a long time to get somebody through screen, and then they have to go to the academy. And it's the better part of a year before they're online. And so having these open recs have allowed us to staff at a certain level. I, I think it's not possible that we would maintain 32 uniformed officers by, after taking away these, these four recs. And so, you know, I'm confident that the IPD will always answer the call, and I'm confident that the IPD will avail itself of other law enforcement and public safety organizations in King County. And so I think they'll always answer the call when the call goes out for help. But in terms of, you know, cruisers on the street and officers, you know, walking the bar, you know, the bar walk that they do on Friday and Saturday nights to make sure that our, our bars are safe, you know, it will have, it will have a potential impact. And so I think it's important we understand that and the role that those open recs play in allowing the IPD to stay well-staffed. And so as we get later in the year, I'm going to certainly hope as we look to build the 2021 budget, that we understand how things are going, how close they have been able to get to maintain those 32 uniformed officers, and what the budget looks like, and whether we will be able to build up that reserve capacity, that reserve hiring capacity to address, to address holes in the staffing as they occur. But I think it's important that the public understand that and that impact. While it, while it won't necessarily affect level of service and response, it will affect how many uniformed officers there are on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I'm going to go back over to Director Goldberg and City Administrator Bob Kowits. I'm not sure who's going to carry for you with the work plan changes or if we're at the end of that presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think we're at the end of that presentation other than to say it is our plan to come back to the council for further discussion on May 4th.
Thank you very much, City Administrator Bob Kowits. Council President Hunt, I wonder if you would share any of the email comments that the council has received during this week on this particular item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. We received many emails related to this topic as well as the topic on regular business, which has to do with the furloughs in particular and the salary reduction. I will summarize the correspondence from community members to the best of my ability in one or two sentences per email. Susan Neville wrote to us with concern about the loss of the Communication Department's Neighborhood Engagement Program and Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator. Hart Sugarman wrote that public safety and police should remain a high priority. Right? Noel wrote he recommended preparing and planning for a more significant budget impact than what is currently estimated and was supportive of not using reserves at this current time. Mary Lynch wrote about multiple topics, including the importance of public safety, communication, and sustainability. And she wrote that she thought the public and council need more information about the changes being made. Corey Christiansen wrote to express concerns regarding the impacts of changes being made by the city in response to the projected financial impacts of COVID-19. And he expressed concern that the administration had not presented enough specificity regarding the projects and resources being cut, and in particular, not enough specificity about the permanence or the timeframe of the changes. Joe Werner wrote to council to express concerns regarding impacts of personnel changes being made by the city in response to the projected financial impacts of COVID-19, particularly regarding the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator position. Tina Conforti wrote to provide input on the importance of communication relations with the Issaquah community and concerns about impacts of personnel changes, including impact on affected personnel and changes being made by the city in response to the projected financial impacts of COVID-19. Geraldine Carey wrote to Issaquah City Council regarding the importance of coverage of city news, communication with residents, and impacts of personnel changes being made by the city in response to the projected financial impacts of COVID-19, particularly with regard to the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator position. And Steve Pereira wrote to Issaquah City Council regarding consideration of roles and responsibilities of the legislative and administrative branches. He also wrote about the need for more information regarding how these changes will impact our ability to carry out the Issaquah Strategic Plan and what is the corresponding weight or preference residents have for outcomes that will be delayed, stopped, or postponed as a result of these changes. Connie Marsh wrote to agree with the comments of Steve Pereira, which I just summarized. And we also received many of these comments today, so I apologize if I missed comments from anyone. That concludes the summary of correspondence.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more questions or comment at this time on the COVID response to Phase 1 budget plan. So at this point in the meeting, we'd move on to the consent calendar. As a reminder, due to tonight's meeting format, we will be taking all votes as roll call votes. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
This is Councilmember Hall. They have.
Thank you very much. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Thank you. Before we move to the motion, Council President Hunt, do you have any email comments to share from the public on any items that were on the consent calendar?
No.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's published agenda.
This is Chris Ray. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We're now moving into the regular business portion of our meeting. We have one item on the agenda this evening, which is AB 7959, furloughs and salary reductions for nonrepresented staff. And I'd like to ask the Administrator Wally Bobkowitz to present this item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you, you have an ordinance that would do two things. First, it would authorize moving forward with 10 days of unpaid furlough for nonrepresented employees other than department directors, the city administrator, and the deputy city administrator. And the second item would be authorizing a salary reduction of 7% for the city administrator, deputy city administrator, and department directors for the remainder of 2020. We are making these recommendations to you in order to help address the budget issues. As we have indicated in the agenda bill, we estimate that a 10-day furlough for nonrepresented employees would save about $183,000, and the 7% salary reduction would save $63,531. You will note here that the mayor, under Washington state law as well as the city council, the value of the compensation for elected officials cannot be changed during the term of office. However, if the mayor of the council wished to make any adjustments to their compensation, those can either be waived or they can be donated back to the city. And City Attorney Jim Haney and I would be happy to discuss that further if there's interest on the council to do that. Otherwise, we're asking that the council move forward and adopt salary ordinance, I'm sorry, adopt the ordinance before you for our action. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. I believe there is a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So I know that there, the council salaries cannot be changed during the term of the office, and we also have a salary commission to permanently change salaries. One of the questions I have is about waiving salaries. And I sent a question in on Friday, I think it was Friday, and I don't have an answer back. So I will repeat my question and just briefly as background, this is kind of where my head's at. The, if the, for the, for the council to reduce its salary sort of commensurate with what the directors are, probably doesn't make a meaningful change in the general fund because the council salaries are not a lot. But if we were to waive, potentially waive, a portion or all of our salaries for a period of time, then, then, I guess the question I would have is first, can we do that? And then second of all, could we take the commensurate, or the equal amount that's being waived that we would be saving from the general fund and then direct the administration to use that money instead for one of the nonprofits? Because, you know, there's interest. Because, you know, there's interest in helping the nonprofits, but concern about using ending fund balance to do that. And one of the reasons I'm thinking about it is because our workload has been reduced a fair amount over the past almost two months because of the meetings that we haven't had. So that's generally the question I had, and I had my calculations, but I actually left them on my desk, but you know, you can figure it out yourself. I think we make 1250 to 1450, depending on the position. And if you, you know, you can figure out what a portion or a total amount of waiving might be. And one of the responses might be, well, we can individually decide to donate, and of course, we can always do that, but then you're also paying income tax, paying, you know, income taxes on the amount that you're making. So my thought was if we waived some or all for a portion of time, then, then we're not paying tax on that, and we're also potentially helping out a nonprofit. So I think that's the question I sent off to you, Wally, by memory on Friday. So that's, that's the question I have, the questions I have. Thanks.
City Administrator Bobkowitz.
And I'll phone a friend, the city attorney, Mr. Haney, to help. But in my understanding is that if individual council members wish to waive a portion of their salary, they may do that, and then it would return, it would, it would not be dispersed, it would stay in the city's general fund. I do not believe, however, then, that that money could be redirected outside of the city government. That would be a gift of public funds, and my understanding would not be allowable. Mr. Haney, can you confirm what I've just said or any other comments you have?
Yes, I believe that the council can waive a portion of their salary. MRSC states that you can. It, MRSC states that that would be non-taxable to a council member. I have not independently verified that with a tax attorney or an accountant, which I am not. I am not a tax attorney or an accountant. As far as redirecting the money to a specific nonprofit, I think the council could give direction to place this money into the Human Services budget portion of, of the budget, and there, then it could be dispersed under the Human Services budget in whatever way the, the budget would allow it to be dispersed, and that could go to nonprofits and so forth. And certainly, you have the ability to, it isn't a gift for, to, to, to spend funds for the necessary support of the poor and the infirm, and that in the, in these times of the COVID-19 pandemic, is probably going to be given a fairly liberal construction in terms of how you spend it on human services. But that's my understanding at this point as to what you could do.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Goodman, did you have a follow-up question?
I do, thank you. Councilmember Goodman here, I just want to make sure I understand. It sounds like, Jim, you're saying that it would not be a gift of public funds, and I guess that would be consistent with my understanding because I see it no differently as the council authorizing an expenditure like we did of $100,000. It would just be amount equal to whatever we decided to waive, correct?
If it, if it went to the Human Services budget and was spent according to, in the same manner as the Human Services budget is spent, it shouldn't be a gift of public funds. Whether that is taxable to council members, not, you know, I, I can't say, but I do know that as far as a waiver is concerned, you would likely need to have a, a formal waiver document that would be signed by you and anyone else who had an interest in the funds. If it's a spouse or a domestic partner, that would require the spouse or domestic partner to sign the waiver form as well, since that is income to that spouse or domestic partner. And, you know, you, again, you could allocate it in the same manner as you do other human services funds.
And I think, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman, that's the key point, is that, that the council would have to, would be allocated as per other funds are allocated, individual council member could not earmark for a specific organization. I think that, that's the distinction.
Sure, thank you. And again, the reason I was thinking about it is because waiving a portion or even all of it for a period of time doesn't necessarily, depending on the amount, make an appreciable difference, but every little bit makes an appreciable difference to a nonprofit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I, I go back to something that Councilmember De Michelle had said the previous week, too, was kind of sharing the pain, you know, everybody making a sacrifice of the sort. So thank you for that comment. I'm not seeing any other questions, but I will go to Council President Hunt again to find out if there were any public comments that she would like to relay on camera about this topic.
The public comment, this is Council President Hunt, the public comments were broadly about the changes that were being recommended, and no correspondent specifically referenced this agenda bill that I found.
Great, thank you very much. I am not seeing any additional questions. Is there somebody who would care to make a motion?
This is Council President Hunt. I will make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number.
2905.
Authorizing the mayor, city administrator, or designee to implement furloughs and temporary salary reductions to address budgetary shortfalls due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Is there a second?
This is Chris Rayle, will second the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Is there any additional discussion? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I, I think that one important detail that's in our materials that were provided, but I don't believe was mentioned in the presentation, is that furloughs and salary reductions are one way that the city can prevent, prevent having had more layoffs. And so this is, this is a really important reason why I believe we should proceed with this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment? And I cannot see all of you on video, so if you've got your hand up and I'm not calling you, can you please note it in the comment column? Okay. Seeing none.
Sorry.
Sorry?
There are some comments.
I see that. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I'm going to support the motion, but I just want to make it clear that, you know, it's a, it's a gloomy evening. It's not, it's, we've known this, this information is coming, and these changes are happening within the city. In my opinion, they are necessary, they are unfortunate, they involve many real people, respected, important, valued members of our team, and it is, you know, it is one of the saddest, saddest evenings that I've had to participate in a council meeting. But, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, you know, we all signed up to do this and make decisions that both make us happy and make us sad. And so I will support the motion. I appreciate all of the presentations tonight. I also appreciate all of the very, very thoughtful work that has taken place. I know this is not, this is, we're at the beginning of this, and we have a lot of other decisions to make. We'll have a tough budget this year. But I just wanted to say that it's, it's just not a, it's not a happy, it's not a happy vote, and I, I'm very sad. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. You have captured the mood exactly. Any other council members wishing to comment before I call for the vote? Seeing none. The motion before council is to adopt ordinance number 2905, authorizing the mayor, city administrator, or designee to implement furloughs and temporary salary reductions to address budgetary shortfalls due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Can the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember De Michelle.
I agree with Councilmember Goodman. This is a very sad vote. I vote aye.
Councilmember Goodman, aye. Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you all. I never thought that a vote, unanimous vote in the affirmative would feel so absolutely painful. The next item on our business today is good of the order. Do any council members have anything they would like to share? I see Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. So City Administrator Bobkowitz spoke earlier that in our next meeting, we will be discussing in more detail the work plan changes. And I think it's important that council have, that it's clear that the work plan changes do relate to policy changes, and this is within the purview of council, and that we do need significantly more information about the work plan changes and the cost of work plan changes if we were to consider other options as the council. We, we just need more information to make those decisions. I wanted to raise one item that was in our materials that is in the work plan changes, which is the Housing Strategy Number Three. It's referred to as the Cancellation of Housing Strategy Number Three, which is a policy that is about retention of affordable housing. And I think as we consider the Rental Assistance Program, and as we consider what else we can do to support vulnerable members of our community right now canceling that program, and the policy implications of canceling a policy that has been previously adopted by the council, I think we need more information about what options we have. And that's not the only one, but that is, that is one. So I wanted to put that out there, that I think clearly the staffing changes that are being, that are being made right now, they reduce the resources that we have, and so there's clearly work plan changes that will have to occur. But I wanted to get council's thoughts on coming, going into the next meeting, what information we might need, if there's information that you think you would need right now about the work plan changes, and then the venue of the next meeting on May 4th for discussing those more, and if council, how council feels about that.
Council President Hunt, would you like council members to weigh in on that this evening, or are you expecting that they would send in their comments and questions to the administration in order to be prepared for the next conversation?
Well, I think, this is Council President Hunt again, I wanted to raise it now because we will not have a meeting between now and May 4th. If there are comments on this, not to put anyone on the spot right now, but if there are comments on work plan changes right now, then I think this could be an opportunity for that at good of the order, and then additionally, we'll have more time on May 4th, and questions also, of course, can always be emailed in. But I wanted to put that out there now, too, because we have this opportunity at good of the order to discuss.
Okay, great. I'm going to continue down the comments list. I think the next council member asking to speak is Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I, I just wanted to close the loop on the discussion about waivers. So I just want to confirm what we've kind of, what we've decided this evening, or if we have decided something. I, as an individual council member, if I would like to waive part of my salary, should contact the administration and let them know that, and, and then each individual council member will be making that decision for themselves. Am I hearing this correctly?
I'll get City Administrator Bobkowitz to respond.
Yes. If you let me know, we'll work with the city attorney's office on an appropriate form. This is a voluntary waiver, so you will have to state your, your desire to do this voluntarily. The city attorney will draft up the appropriate document, and then that will occur hopefully in the next paycheck. But give us, give us a couple of days to sort through the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to comment as well for the rest of the group, as the plans were developed, I had expected my position to be part of the leadership team's position, and so I'm not sure what form I have to fill out or whatever, but I am expected to take the same pay cut as the leadership team, and my is going, my, I am doing that so that our entire staffing team is sharing the burden of what we're doing, and so therefore, I was not intending on redirecting that at all, but in order to offset some other salaries. So that's my intent. I believe the next I have up for comment is Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Zach Hall. I just had a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank council and you, Madam Mayor. You know, as a new council member, this has obviously been a rough year, a rough start to my term, and I want to thank council and the mayor for your continued guidance and advice working through being an elected leader, and the wealth of experience and passion that you all have continues to motivate me, so I really appreciate you all. Anyways, thank you. And secondly, I wanted to touch really quickly on neighborhood engagement. I appreciate to the fullest extent administrations, you know, I've heard over and over the theme that they're still committed to community engagement, neighborhood engagement, this doesn't change anything. I had a great conversation with City Administrator Bobkowitz this morning, who mentioned that we're going to have to start thinking creatively about how we do neighborhood engagement, because it truly is very important at this point in time, probably more important than, than it would have been. And his idea, and I really liked it, too, and I would like to invite other council members to join me, but call on us if you need help touching the community. I, you know, we all have unique experience of how we got here, which gives us the experience of community engagement, and I think that that is an excellent resource. I think that all of us are an excellent resource to tap to reach out into the communities that we live in, for us to be persistent and enthusiastic about reaching out into communities that we haven't heard before, and then bring those conversations to the table with whatever ongoing work this city is doing, with whatever projects that we are moving forward with, with things that we might be missing, things that are falling through the cracks. I just wanted to ask my fellow council members to join me in committing to helping be a part of that neighborhood engagement work. I'm very much looking forward to it. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall, and we're glad to have you aboard. You chose a very interesting time to join local government, and we appreciate it. Is there any other comments? I think Council President Hunt might have an additional comment. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I, I wanted to also comment on both the neighborhood engagement and the sustainability outreach and sustainability efforts. For, both of those are in the work plan, and those, both of those changes will be something that I think we need to think about how we can maintain our commitment, because I do believe the city is committed to ongoing neighborhood commitment, as well as ongoing sustainability, environmental stewardship, and climate change. So I do look forward to discussing options for how we can continue that, given the current resource situation. I also wanted to comment on, the mayor spoke in her opening comments about the Recovery Task Force, hopefully I referred to that correctly, but I think that, I think that having community voices in this is really important. Council is still working, and I, we are still receiving emails, and we still very much welcome feedback that the community provides via email. I also think the Recovery Task Force and all of the community engagement on the topic of recovery is, is really critical right now. So thank you for the task force, and. So thank you for the task force, and looking forward to continue working on how we can continue our commitments to our strategic plan and our city's core values.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Walsh. I wanted to commend the administration, the finance director, and everyone in making such a quick pivot. I know we are one of the first cities in the area to really take on this question of what is the budget impact and the revenue impact, and what changes do we need to make in order to be a good user of taxpayer funds and make sure that we are balancing our budget? Because as a city, we do not print money. We cannot run a deficit. We have to have a balanced budget. So I wanted to thank everyone for presenting this information while everything is very uncertain. I also want to caution and just put out the thought that none of this information is certain, and things may get worse before they get better from a financial picture. And so I am very much in the idea that as much as this was a very difficult night to have a unanimous vote and to present the data, I also expect that it may not be the last one that we have to do as we handle the financial impacts of this crisis. So, gosh, I hate to end on this note. Anyone else want to do a?
I'll add some good stuff at the end.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. It is a night of significant decisions, for sure. I had some comments on some upcoming meetings. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28, all city public meetings except council meetings have been canceled through the month of April, and it's pretty fair to assume that this will carry on into May as well. This includes the cancellation of boards and commission meetings and council study sessions, and city council regular meetings will continue to occur as scheduled, but we will be using, continuing to use this remote meeting platform. At the next council meeting, which is scheduled for May 4th at 7:00 PM, potential agenda items include the Tyler Technologies Contract Amendment, the first 2020 Budget Amendment, and 2020 Budget Reauthorizations. I wanted to just share a few closing comments, but before I do, I'm going to let Councilmember De Michelle jump in. Go ahead, Barbara.
Thank you. Sorry. I do want to comment on the fact that it's been very nice to be able to see your shiny faces and smiley faces and sad faces. So I appreciate the work of the communications group and, and our city clerks to get this up and running. For me, at least, it has made a huge difference in just working through and listening to all of everybody's comments. I really appreciate that. And with others, I just join and say I have appreciated the leadership, the clarity, as much clarity as we can have, and the information we've received this past week. So I'm very proud to be a part of what's happening while we have to make these really, really tough decisions. So, but thanks again to the communications people for getting us all here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I agree, it is very nice to see everybody's face. Very nice. So my closing comments are about the consequences of the actions that were taken. The city team that I work with, that serves our community, they're very talented, they're very dedicated. They make a huge difference, and it's one of the reasons why I think Issaquah is an amazing place to live. In January of this year, we had heard about something over in Asia, but none of us expected where we would be today. The drama, the trauma, the illness, the, the loss of jobs, it is absolutely devastating. I just wanted to let you all know how hard it was for myself and my team to come up with the recommendations for this expenditure reduction plan. Every single person who is leaving the city, all 22 of them, have made this city a better place, has served this community and these residents to the best of their ability to make this an amazing place. We're going to miss all of them, the ones that are retiring and the ones that have only been with us for a few years. This has nothing to do with their work or their attitude. It has to do with the COVID virus and the economic impact it's had. We are sorely going to miss them. I took the time today to write some cards of appreciation for the work that they've done, how they've made our community a better place, and the graciousness of them as team players. They've been amazing to work with. This is really, really hard, but it's people like this that work on your team. It's people like this who work in our community, and I am so grateful to be with them. So it's been a tough couple of weeks. I'm optimistic with all the national and county news and state news that I listen to, that we're getting into our next phase, that we're, we, we have some more information, we're going to talk about moving forward, we're going to have a reentry of businesses and activities into our lives and into our community. It's going to get better. I'm positive it's going to get better. And I just wanted to thank you all for your work tonight, and if you are so inclined to send any well wishes to any of those employees that are ending their service with us, please send it through my office. Please tell me what you want to do, and I will help you do, because I am very indebted to the work that they have done. It's hundreds of years, if you add it all up, in service to this community. They are amazing. It's an amazing group of people. So thank you. We did have an executive session earlier today. We concluded it without any regular business during the meeting. And so if there is, and I'm going to check my column one more time, if there is no further business, we are adjourned at 9:22. Thank you for all your good work tonight. Have a great night.